Welcome, everyone, to the August 26, 2014 meeting. We'll get right into the agenda tonight. There's no one here for public forum. Any announcements? Jeff, you have any announcements?
None.
Right? No? Okay. And we'll do the minutes of August 6.
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen's minutes of August 6, 2014.
Motion they made is there? Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, Mass Works grant. DPW Director, what do we have going on, Phil?
Michael was in this morning to discuss some other things, but the Mass Works grants did come up. Paul came in and joined us when we had our little powwow with him about them. We are applying for the sidewalk grant from the small communities. Have a letter of support from the Housing Authority. I will be receiving one from Chief Osley tomorrow. That is key. Paul did provide them with the study from across the street for the center school housing as part of that package, so that's going to be attached to it. And the other grant that we're applying through for Mass Works again will be the West Street project. We're scaling it back a little bit. We're going to just include the project as presented for the 1.9 million, I think it is. We're not going to include extending it to the Waitley line because it seems like there's a little bit of hesitation from Mass DOT about the traffic.
I thought we were going to stop it at the Chestnut Street Bridge anyway.
It's the original plan, but part of that was to include, the last grants have included continuing, you know, that, this is phase one of phase two.
Right.
So, we're not going to include that in this grant. We're just going to center it on that 1.9 million to Chestnut Street.
Okay, but now if you just go to Chestnut Street, that doesn't help us capture the businesses up just for, you know, FedEx and stuff like that.
No, won't go no further.
Why, why wouldn't they just go up to those businesses?
From church. From church.
The concern that I have on, on the health side is that the septic systems that are in there has over a water aquifer system, okay? And that's, that's a constant failure right along, every year we have a number of them that fail.
Well, is it, is it the thought that that's about as much?
We're trying to scale it back.
Scale it to the dollar figure that make it more competitive?
More competitive as well as, like I said, there's been a lot of resistance from Mass DOT about the traffic, you know, because including in that is some kind of traffic study that they wanted to say how much more traffic is going to go to the Waitley line. They're pushing back on that.
Okay, on another note, are we going to get a letter for the housing project, for the solar housing project there?
That, I don't know. I mean, that would be nice. He's going to include the letter from last year, but I don't know if we could update that. I mean, I haven't.
All right, I can talk to.
You can talk to him. I mean, the more, the merrier, I guess.
Yeah, we need to get it like tomorrow because the grants due Friday.
Why don't you tell me Friday? Okay, I'll see what I can do.
Well, there was a third one that was supposed to go in.
We had that discussion.
There was that agricultural building there that they were talking about.
No, this is, recall, this has to do with the transmission line. And not knowing the final outcome of what Representative Kokot's efforts will result in, you know, recall, he's trying to, still, still working the, to recover the costs associated with going under 91. We were, another alternative proposed by Senator Rosenberg's office was, hey, the, the portion from, say, Brockway Smith up to the top of the grade on Chestnut Street would be a prime Mass Works project. So, as an alternative, a backup essentially to whatever Representative Kokot was working, their office strongly suggested we, we put that in. And that's what we voted some months back, that that would be the third project. This first I've heard, now that it's due, that we're backing away from that submission.
Well, this is what Mike said. Those projects are supposed to be for economic development projects. He said, "There's no way I can spin that project into a, to make it look like an economic development project."
I don't see, we're not going anywhere. Okay, we're stopping at Gore Avenue. There's no projects, there's no businesses at Gore Avenue.
Says, "There's no way I can spin it."
Yeah. I don't see how we can, how we can apply for anything if it's, there's no businesses going to.
I guess he didn't want to throw up the red flag, applying for that third grant.
That's probably what it is.
You know, as far as.
Undermining what.
Undermining what we're trying to do.
What we're trying to do, Kokot, until that's done.
You know, I mean, I think that was his biggest.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, the other grant had, you know, a better chance. You know, he felt that, you know, it, that project had no chance, none whatsoever.
Okay.
Okay. So.
What else you got, Phil?
The transmission line is up.
Excuse me, so when do we get to see these?
He said he's going to fire them away before he submits them, so.
Okay.
He'll be, I'm sure he'll be emailing them.
Okay.
I mean, the one that we've been applying for, for the last few years is probably about the same.
We all want to know what's in there because he got a call.
He always CCs me when he submits it to the state. Absolutely, he does it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll come to me as well as you. The transmission main is up and running. Everything's hooked in. They're just cleaning up the project now. Things went well. I mean, Mike pushed them a little bit towards the end here to get it up, tested and online, and they've done that within the timeframe, so now it's just a matter of cleaning up.
Do we have anybody going up there to check on the cleanup? Because I was up there the other, last weekend. I don't know if you guys took a walk up there, but it's horrible up there.
Yeah.
I mean, you can see where the water originally had its washway down into some of the wetland areas, and then it went into the brook, causing the silt to come off. Well, they changed the whole structure of all that, and now it goes directly into the brook. So, as I was standing there, a truck went by and the water just turned brown. It was unbelievable. That's unacceptable. That's not going to happen. I, I mean, I, I'm ready to call DEP and let them go up there and monitor the project. That's how upset I was when I saw what was going on up there. And if, if they're, they're going to try to put it back together just the way it is right now, that's unacceptable.
Yeah, and I, you know, Ryan, who's been the project manager up there, was here today, and we had that discussion with him about, you know, we want it restored as was.
There was, originally, there was, there was like shelves coming off of the hill where the residual, the wa, the silt would come down and land, and then the water would run off. That's gone. It's, it's, some of it's just straight down the hill. And, you know, I'm not sure what they're planning to do, but they really need to put that stuff back because if it's not, it's going to constantly wash out for us.
Yeah, so we're.
I mean, I walked it from one end to the other, and it's, there's a lot of areas.
They started today up on the upper end, you know, they started it today, and what, you know, they're going slow and trying to, you know, restore it as it was, so.
I, I think DEP should be involved in it because it involves.
We don't want to raise the flag.
Well, the flag's already been raised, Phil. I mean, there was so much mud and silt that went into those streams up there, it's not funny, okay? It's a disaster, that's what it is. And, and they need to be cleaned up. They need to be cleaned up big time. I mean, their, their cribbing or whatever held the silt back has all washed it, washed out. The roads, the water's just flowing right into the brook direct, right out the road.
I'll call Ryan again, but he was here today, so.
Yeah, I wasn't too happy when I saw all that stuff, but, anyway. That's, that's what's going on up there. I don't know if you guys took a walk up there or not, but I'd advise it and take a look at what's going on. What else you have?
Would you read the circle?
Well, when I came back from vacation, there was a message on my answering machine about the situation down there. I guess the question is, it either yes or no, can it be, the water be turned on to irrigate the circle?
Well, there's also the question, he's, he's looking for reimbursement.
Correct. First of all, he's looking for reimbursement for the, for the construction of the waterline going in, going across there. That's what he's asking.
Well, I gave you some proposed words. The gentleman was here. I, I think there's a couple of points that our response should confirm. One, the DEPW Director had authority to authorize the removal of the brush, causing a safety hazard. He also had the authority to allow the gentleman to install at his expense the waterline to the circle on his meter. And while the board does not support reimbursement, it does not object to the Director DPW removing the suspension on Mr., on the gentleman's watering the circle at his expense if he chooses to do so. The suspension was due to a series of complaints from neighbors that may not be settled but have been addressed. Some response like that. It was important to make because of his allegations that he had, did not have the authority to make the decisions he made. He had the authority, and we want to confirm that. That's important. And, and the other, the fact that he chose to put water the circle, wonderful. He chose to do that at his expense, install it at his, his expense. The Director approved that. He only held him up temporarily because there was a lot of issues going on regarding the circle. But now, if he chooses to reinstate that at his expense?
Just to water it, not to, not to put any plantings, that's.
We're talking about water.
Just to be very clear, if he wanted to water the circle, it'd be no different than anybody else wanting to go out there with a hose and water the circle.
People do that, okay? People drag a hose across to some of those circles.
So, yeah, what's the difference?
There's no, not much difference, okay, on that part. But as far as putting in plantings or whatever, that's not the case. There's none of that going to happen unless the, the community wants to take, take action and take responsibility for it. But we're not taking action and taking responsibility for that and maintenance of it.
So, well.
Just to be really clear on that.
So, the message on my machine clearly was one question. Is it yes or no that he can irrigate the circle?
Well, I.
That was on my machine.
That was on your machine. I've talked to him a couple of times.
Well, he has a letter here.
Yeah, so there's two questions. He wants to get reimbursed, and he wants to know if Phil had the authorization and.
I move to direct the Director DPW to communicate with the gentleman and respond that, A, the board does not support reimbursement. The board confirms the Director DPW's authority to allow watering at the individual's expense.
Yeah, he, he wants, he wants a letter. He wants something in writing.
And that's with no plantings?
Yeah, we're just, we're just talking about watering.
Motion been made, is there a second?
Yep, second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So, Phil, you'll get back to them and let him and let him know that we're not going to reimburse him, and that he could water the circle if he wanted to, but there's no plantings to be done.
Correct.
And if they, if the neighborhood wants to put plantings in there, they're going to have to come in to you and get an authorization from you and a plan and whatever. And then at that point, we, we will not maintain the circle, it'd be their responsibility.
I'm not for the plantings, but.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing is, when I was on vacation, I understand that there was a discussion about the weight limit signs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just. Jimmy came up to me, and, and he said, "This doesn't make sense." He said, "Because CNS, we're, we're allowing CNS trucks to go down plain road, and it was a good catch because we, we don't want the trucks going down plain road, so the signs on plain road should be different than the ones up in the mountain."
Well, we were responding, there's a town bylaw that specifies which streets in town are subject to this signage.
Correct.
And these limitations.
Right.
So, that's what DPW is off charge to do.
Right.
For the moment.
Right.
Get, get the dates in there, get the weight limits.
And the signs are made, and the signs will be installed.
Get those signs made and posted at appropriate locations.
Right. The only thing is, we might hold back on posting plain road.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Because right now, plain road is posted for 12,000 pounds, not 24.
Do we need to change the bylaw?
Yeah, exactly.
We have to change the bylaw, so.
Yeah, so the.
And if we're going to change the bylaw, I think that we really have to take a look at that bylaw with the dates. Because, does the road get better in May? Absolutely not. I mean, they've just torn up Lindsay Road again from the big trucks running it over. We fixed it, we patched that one spot by 151. We put the paver down there, and it's all tore up again because of the heavy trucks coming out of there. So, we really have to think about that anyways, as far as what the bylaw states with the dates. Do we just limit it to that weight on them roads without dates?
Well, that means.
Changing the bylaw.
There's a lot of people that are going to be upset because they do, they have to maintain their logging, their forestry up there.
But they have the right to come in and ask for a special permit from the Board of Selectmen.
And then we can issue one or not, and any damage that is done, they're going to have to repair.
Because right now, after May, they just have at it.
Okay, so we look at.
We'll have to look at the bylaw.
Well, is this.
It might not be all the streets, but I know, you know, Lindsay Road is a critical road with that water main being so shallow when they're in the soil conditions. One of these days, they're going to pop it. There's no doubt about it.
We have, we're talking, going to be talking later in the meeting about a special town meeting. Is this something where we could propose an article for that special town meeting?
We can change the bylaw.
It corrects the bylaw?
Yep, so we'll have to look at it right away and get it ready.
Yeah, the sooner the better, I'd say.
Why don't you make a note of that, Paul, so we have that on this part, part of the agenda.
But it's definitely a bylaw that has to be addressed there.
Yes, it is.
Do you want to bring up DEP? The.
We covered that last time. Oh, oh, okay.
We got a check for $1,404.82 for six months for recycling of a dump.
Yeah.
Just want to, I thought you were going to bring that up in your report.
And that's.
But you didn't bring it up, so.
Six months.
Let everybody know that's what's going on, just on the recycling. Again, check for $1,404.82 for six months worth of recycling.
It's very good.
It was good.
If, are we going to dismiss Director DPW? If, if so, I know we're going to cover old business later on. I'd like to cover a couple of old business items.
You can, you can bring them up. What do you got?
With DPW, one, the wastewater treatment plant grant, $99,940. Who's got the con on that contract?
It's on the energy?
Yes.
Me.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's.
Moving forward.
All right, so, okay, that's, there is this, Division of Local Services sent around this thing, reminding folks about this debt service relief fund where people, or communities could apply for essentially a grant to help pay down debt associated with sewer line improvements. The application date is 10 October. Do we have any such debt that we could apply?
Sure, we've got, we've got a lot of debt. We got bridge free debt.
Just, just with sewer, yeah.
Is it sewer lines?
Sewer lines, yeah.
Or is it sewer, I mean, is it wastewater?
Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30, 29, Section 22. I'm not going to sit here and read it for folks, but how about checking it out? Because by 10 October, the thing is due.
Because if it includes wastewater improvements, whether it be at the plant with the RBCs, we have debt.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, but we've got debt out as part of the high-pressure lines, too, from 20 years. We haven't paid that debt off yet. There's a lot of debt out there. Bridge Street, we haven't paid off Bridge Street yet.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, there's a lot of debt out there that we haven't paid at all.
I think that we'll have to sit down with Greg and go through the debt.
Okay, whatever's required.
But we want to get going on that. If, if we're eligible for it, we can get something paid down on it. That's what we want to do.
The worst that could happen is they say no.
Right, right.
Which is where we are anyway.
Help ourselves paying some of the debt off.
I thought you were going to say what we're used to.
Well, this Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 29, Section 22, sewer debt relief fund, so please take a look at that.
When is that due?
10, 10 October.
Yeah, we'll sit, I'll sit down with Greg and see what's in there for the debt.
So, you get a hold of Mike, probably, or, no, Mike's on water. Who was on sewer?
Brian.
Brian, yeah.
So, we can do.
We have all the debt schedules on there.
Yeah, I would just clarify exactly what that entitles us to, though, before you guys go through all the work of looking up the debt to find out exactly what qualifies, you know, what.
Get, get somebody to look at that to start preparing, to see if it's worth preparing the, the whole thing.
Correct, right.
Okay, to see if we do qualify.
Couple other things. There was a gentleman on Chestnut Street whom I understand we've not yet answered concerning tree roots in his lines. Did you look up what the standard is?
I did.
What is it?
Is it on town property, is it on private property?
See, that's the problem.
I need to know that.
Here's the, this is, this is what's in the rules and regs. I know there was some other discussion prior to when we had the problem here on School Street, but there was never an official vote taken to change anything. So, this is the current, this is the current rules and regulations approved on September 10th of 2010.
Okay, applying this criteria to the gentleman's request?
If it's a town tree and it must be replaced, the town's responsibility is from the street to the property line.
Street to the property line, that's what we maintain. Anything past that, they maintain.
Well, that isn't what we maintain. That's what we would pay for to replace because otherwise, if it's a maintenance issue, it's the sewer, is the responsibility of the homeowner.
Right. I mean, if they.
From the house to the, right to the main.
If they rode a route right out to the property line, and it's clean to there, and then there's something on our part, then we have to maintain it.
So, my feeling is that he has to prove that it's beyond his property line.
Yeah, it's very easy to do. You just have Rotary to come in and, and run the cutter right out through.
Well, he's looking, he's looking for someone to pay for Rotary to come in.
Yeah, he's working for someone to do that as the town.
No, we're not going to do that. We're not going into his house to do that.
Is to camera the line. To camera the line from the house, his responsibility from the house to his property line to see what's in there.
Right.
And anything beyond that would be our responsibility.
And that's, that's the response that should be given to him.
Yes. But the only reason it wasn't answered is because there was so much discussion prior to his letter about who's responsible for what with the issue here on School Street.
Just got to remember, the property line is the key here. Anything from the property line on our side, we maintain. From the property line to their house, they maintain. We don't have control over a tree that the roots grew into their property. We just don't have control of that.
And what if it's vice versa? What if it's his tree that grew into the town side?
If it's there, then we're responsible for it. It's into our system, absolutely. If it's on our side, from their tree onto our side, we're responsible on our side.
Look, this is what we've agreed to.
Got to have some kind of a.
Yeah, got to be a cutout.
Uniformity, and that's it.
So, if there's something wrong with what we've agreed to at some point, come back and, or you have suggested improvements, please make them, make the suggestions, and we'll address them. But for the, for the moment, please apply whatever we have agreed to and respond to the gentleman, and let him get going with whatever needs to get going with. Okay, the other thing, gentleman from Colonial Lakers had two issues. One, with respect to your role as tree warden, and the other, with respect to the plowing and damage to grass because you didn't, you marked one side of the road and not the other side. Have we closed? Have we closed?
That part of it's cleared up. We will mark his side of the road. And as far as the trees go, I did meet the homeowner whose trees they are yesterday.
Okay.
And had a conversation with him, and he was going to go over to Colonial Lakers and talk to the individual himself about the trees, about what they can come up with as compromise. And I did email him this morning.
Okay.
So.
So, you communicated?
I've communicated.
You're closing that, okay.
Yes.
That's all I had.
Okay, got anything else?
No.
Thanks, Phil. Okay, special town meeting. Set a date.
I move to conduct a special town meeting on 21 October, 2014, to have the town administrator draft the articles on center school, the tax collector position, and, what is it we were just talking about?
The weight limit bylaw.
And weight limit bylaw for Board of Selectmen approval at our next meeting.
The town collector also has a couple of articles she, not the town collector, but the town clerk told me she has a couple of articles. They're kind of housekeeping articles. I don't know what they are yet.
Maybe I should amend it, but you'll, you'll include the ones we wanted.
And others, yeah.
Move to conduct a special town meeting on 21 October, 2014, to have the town administrator draft the appropriate articles to be considered.
There you go. Motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
And further discussion, do we want to?
Just one comment. I, I closed with, I talked to town moderator, he's okay. You've talked to.
Oh, okay.
He's okay with that date.
Okay, good.
Talked to, you've talked to Lydia, she's, she's okay with that date.
Yeah.
Only other thing was, which school do we want to use? Somebody needs to clear it.
That's a Thursday night.
I don't know what, what else they might have scheduled.
No, they wouldn't have basketball, but I don't, I mean, I don't know what the calendar is of the schools.
Well, we just need to, I'm sure one of them would be open.
Superintendent to call tomorrow.
Okay. Now, that's going to give us plenty of time to get the bylaws in there and stuff like that. Okay, all right, I'm okay with that. Motion been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. That's the date, October 21st. Special town meeting. Topic four, open space committee, open space plan.
I drafted a letter response, you could, because it's an earlier, read ahead. Can you reprint it again? Someone else have other ideas to add or subtract, whatever?
The letter you had drafted originally, then we talked to Mark at the last meeting, that's, you're, you had a question about a particular sentence or wording and that, right, or the interpretation of, and that.
Well, I.
Has that been straightened out, I guess, is my.
Not, not really. The plan hasn't been changed, but.
One that was.
But here, here's, here's my point. It can't be, in my view, all protect and not, and preserve and preclude economic development. There has to be.
A balance.
A balance between the two.
I agree.
And there was one, for example, one- just an example, and perhaps unintended, but it says on one of the pages, something about not developing anything west of Interstate 91. Well, that's Route 5 and 10. That's probably where we're gonna have and-
That's prime area for development.
Right. Well, there's- we have lots of restrictions on where we actually can't develop, but there will be some development out there. So I'm just saying, the way it's- it's- the tone of the material is preserve and protect. And I respect that. That's kind of where they come from, the folks that prepare this. But everyone needs to recognize, and I think it's important, that the board of selectmen go on record just saying, hey, there's got to be a balance.
I agree. And I also remember that when Mark was here, he said that was not the intent of not allowing proper growth. So I think it was-
He said, well, they can't stop any development. We understand that. But I just think it's important to make the point that-
Right.
There has to be a balance between the two.
It's strictly a, you know, it has no teeth. It's a glossy document.
Why don't we just have them change that in the report?
Well, we're just providing a comment. Otherwise, we-
Right.
Right.
We're agreeing with it.
I think by going on record with Jeff's comments, I think that satisfies my-
I also agree with that. So the three of us are in agreeance as far as there has to be a balance. No question about it.
Right.
Well, then I move to approve the draft as submitted.
Second.
Further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
But don't misread. It was a good report and a good- also a reminder, the board of selectmen have some things to do. Tax collector recruitment.
Okay, tax collector recruitment.
Pardon me? It's not closed. All I heard was, is this a meeting? That's all I heard. I didn't hear the closed part.
Well, if you'd like to come in, sir?
Come on in.
Come on in. Oh, absolutely.
We'll-
Come on in.
We'll have one.
I don't- I don't even know who it is.
He wants a public- beer before public forum. Hi. No, no problem.
It's okay.
Were you here for the public forum, Jimmy?
Yeah.
Well, let's hold- we'll go back to public forum because they were waiting outside. I didn't even know you guys were out there. Sorry. Come right up in-
There's a microphone.
You're on right away. We'll put you up right now.
We just had a question on Little Napontet Road. You're sort of aware of that we thought it was a private road and then we were told it wasn't. And we're just wondering if anything's been done to figure that out or what we have to do to, um, I don't know, get this signed down?
I haven't done anything. It depends on the lawyers. And I don't know, Phil, you've done anything.
Well, I think, you know, if I may, you solved the riddle. You came to me and said, "We own, we own, you know, a section of Little Napontet Road. It's not a public way." And I said, "Well, that takes care of that. It's not a public way."
But other people have told me, "Oh, yeah, the town has accepted it." We don't show that to the town.
No, there's no record. There's no record of that.
All right, that's what we're sort of trying to-
There's no record of that.
Trying to figure out here.
Yeah. No, so based on what you informed me and based on our-
Well, according to my deed, we do.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's the key. And yeah, there's absolutely no record-
Well, we've been paying taxes on it too for-
Yeah, well, that says something.
We do pay taxes on the road.
Yeah, and there's absolutely no record of the town ever taking action to accept it as a road. So it's not, as far as I'm concerned.
So it's still considered a private right of way?
You don't know- you don't know what was accepted back when the- when they first originally put Dammunam Shop there and stuff like that. They could have given an easement. They could have given a-
Yeah.
Well, that's on our deed and our- we used to own the property behind- well, they used- Ryan's owned the property behind too. And they sold that piece to Myers Mendelson and kept all rights to the road. We showed that.
So then the easement, they still have- they still have-
But we're talking town road.
Yeah, and easement is not a town road.
Right. Yeah, easements are totally different than town road. We're not looking to-
And I don't know how far-
We're not looking to put up a barricade or a fence across the road. We're not looking for anything like that. So I'm just saying, you know, we're not here for any of that stuff. We're just trying to get clarification on road because people are saying, "Oh, yeah, it's accepted. It's a town road. It's called Little Napontet." Well, we don't show it as Little Napontet. It's called Meadows Road. But there's a sign up that says Little Napontet.
Only go by what the planning, you know, number of planning boards said. And he said there was a house back there, but it could have been back there with an easement, that kind of stuff. I wasn't there back then, neither were you and anybody else.
Right.
That's what's going on. Paul, you have more information. I did.
Or for you to take down a Little Napontet sign.
Until we can really fi- until it's figured out what the real name is. Little Napontet, if you notice on the maps, goes up where Scotland was.
Yeah. I saw that on the map.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's that other part, the other part to come up with.
Yeah, Little Jet Out, which they used to call Old- I even did Marvin's, I didn't bring that deed with me. Old something Road. And then they've been calling it Meadow Road since, in all the deeds, other deeds.
But that's, I think you need to look into that a little bit further.
We've beat it to death between pulling up the old maps and then them providing that their deed, saying they own half the road. So I imagine the other half's opened by the other homeowner on the other side.
It's weird how it goes, yeah. It's- yeah, it's weird.
So.
He owns the top.
I think the question that they're asking is about the street sign, if I heard you right.
Yeah.
For crossing for sewer or water or anything like that, crossing our property, what rights do they have, if any?
I think that's different.
If you had sewer and water crossing your property, there should be an easement if you own it.
Yeah, that would be the- yeah.
And they better not look at assessor records. They only want a counter in Antrim County, which is-
Right, right. Yes, I know that.
DPW put one across our property in Jericho.
So is that- is there water and sewer to the back properties that go across your easement or no? I guess is the question.
That I don't know.
But see-
Not overly concerned with what's there right now.
You also have to read your easement though.
I think what we're concerned with is change of use. Back there is the major, major issue for that parcel in the back. That's a planning board allowed to be split when it's not even a town road. So there really is no town road frontage on that back half. That's the major, in a nutshell.
Planning boards are gonna have to deal with that.
That's right.
That was their issue, but-
Yeah.
You know, we're like, hey, wait a minute. It's not really a street. So that sign really should-
I don't know what the easements say, if they allow, you know, the people to put water lines and sewer lines.
And I'm not overly concerned with that. We're not overly concerned with that. Like I said, my major concern was the planning board splitting a lot in the back, change of use of that back lot. Consider wanting to think that this is a town road, that they can do what they want back there. It's been investigated before for somebody for the parcel way in the back. And he found out that it was not a town road and he wanted to do what he wanted to do back there. It's not the first time it's come up. So I guess we're looking to have the sign taken down. Unless somebody can prove that that is Little Napontet Road and it's a town road and the sign belongs up there.
I think you want confirmation with the planning board, Phil, before you do anything.
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of roads everywhere that have signs on them and they're not town roads.
Okay.
I mean, that's pretty common.
Mm-hmm. All right.
And I think it's more of a safety purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd hate to take it down and, you know, if something happened down there and somebody can't find to go down there, that would be not good. North Am- ambulance or something like that.
They can't get down there.
That'd be a tough-
It hardly looks like a road. It looks more like a driveway.
It's washed out anyway, so.
The hill's all washed out anyway, so nobody's getting down there.
But as far as, you know, the change of use, I think that's the planning board's issue.
That's the planning board issue, change of use, absolutely.
Well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Not much we're gonna do with help you out there, Jimmy. It's not much we can do. There's an issue with the planning and stuff like that. That's where it's gonna have to take place.
Sign's gonna stay up for now then?
Yep.
Pardon?
Sign's gonna stay up for now then?
I would highly recommend that sign staying there, whether it's a road or not, just for emergency, like Phil says. Okay, if there's something that happened down there, otherwise you're not gonna know where Little Napontet Road is, whatever it is.
It's down off Elm Court. It's really where it is.
Well, it goes right around. Well, that's what they claim. Okay. Whether it comes up on a private road or not, it's still there.
I think there's a concern for sure, safety wise, with the change, with the name change of any street for that matter, as far as emergency vehicles and how those addresses are built into the 911 databases and things like that. So if there's a- it would have to be a coordinated effort should the name of the street change.
Before we remove anything.
But yeah, just to not only remove it, but if it's actually gonna change to or go back to or become the Meadows Street, depending what you're looking for, definitely has to be a coordinated effort. I mean, I-
So you're- so we're gonna have to go to planning board to see about that back lot, getting an address because it's- can't have Little Napontet as an address, right?
I don't know what's going on back there. So, correct. That's correct.
Okay, so that would be planning board, but the building inspector's one that gives addresses, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But if there is not frontage on a town way, then there is no access.
Right. I know.
It's as simple as that.
What's that?
I said, "If there is not adequate frontage on a town way, then it doesn't have- there's no access to the lot."
Correct.
What do you mean? They've got an easement to get to that lot. What do you mean?
You gotta- under the zoning bylaws, you have to have adequate frontage on a town way.
Well, that building has been there before the zoning bylaws even came in.
That's right. That's right. For anybody to do anything new, that's the case.
Correct.
I don't care about the old building.
Change of use is what you're saying.
Right, but even still access to it too. They split the lot.
Office or warehousing, then it's a whole different-
But they split the lot. The address is all one address. It was all one address, 65 Elm Street. They split the lot in half. Now the back half doesn't have an address. And it shouldn't be Little Napontet because that's not a road.
They would probably, even if they split it and there was enough, whatever they gotta do, they could do the parcel like they did back here and have A and B or something like that. It'd be the same address. It'd be whatever Elm Street A and whatever Elm Street B. It'd be the same address, A and B. Just what they did back here.
We're just trying to protect our property. That's all. Don't pay taxes.
We hear you.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thanks.
All right, getting back to our agenda, tax collector.
Now that they just- they- something, can I just go back to the DPW stuff? I just want you to be aware that, again with Mike all because they were mentioning easement, so that put the light bulb off. We had a discussion today about the next phase, the jacking under 91. And I told him to proceed with the money that's in place with the bond that we have out there. So we're gonna proceed. He figures we're gonna probably bid it in September. And it's best to jack during the winter months, so we're gonna jack it in January, hopefully, as long as Mass DOT doesn't have a problem with that, which they shouldn't. But the only part of that is that afterwards, when we come up through the railroad is the Brockway and Smith side, we have to take a 25 or 30-foot easement across that whole property. Because right now, the easement goes behind the building. It loops around the back of that building. So there's no front easement where the pipe is gonna be. So we're gonna have to take an easement through that property. So I told him to draft it up. We'll definitely give it to town council and let them work their magic. And I don't think there's gonna be any resistance, which I hope there isn't, but-
I don't think there will be.
You know, but I just wanted-
But if you're doing that, then you're taking it also in front of what's his name's house. You'd be taking 25-foot easement on that property too. That's gonna put him right up against the front steps.
No, he didn't say anything about an easement on that side there. He just said the Brockway and Smith property, they need the easement.
Well, the Brockway-Smith and then you've-
To continue on, you mean. To stop there.
Because we're gonna be going on the other side of property.
We're trying to get the pipe under 91, under the tracks, right to the Mill River. That's what we're trying to do with the money that's in place today.
Right.
Initially, we thought we'd have to stop it prior to Brockway, but I think he thinks there's enough to go to the Mill River, where the Mill River's gonna- the crossing's gonna be. And the other thing is that we're writing a letter to the homeowner that has a compost facility there about, you know, that's our easement through there. So-
Right.
We're writing him a letter to-
He's gotta move his operation or whatever. It's not town property.
Totally, you know, because if it's gonna be happening sooner than later, hopefully, I mean, we hope that-
Well, won't they stay on the ground all the way through and up into- on the other side of the railroad? Just makes sense to do that.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know how much room is there to jack it all that way.
Why would they come up and then go right back down again? Why not just keep on going?
Maybe.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Maybe that's the plan, but I still think-
No, he wouldn't have to disturb anything there. I wouldn't. I'd go right straight through.
Yeah, I don't know what the jacking plan stays.
Because if you start coming up and then going back down, unless you're doing it for a maintenance reason.
Yeah, well, I imagine there's gotta be some kind of valves and hydrants down in there somewhere between both sides of 91 in case something happens. I mean, I know that that was part of the plan. So we don't- something ever happened under there, they wanna be able to, you know, isolate it.
Gonna shut it off.
But to get back to Ed's point, easements not only needed from Brockway-Smith, but from the homeowner immediately to the east.
Bill, what's his name, Bill?
I'm drawing a blank. The guy that owns the- I know who you mean.
His first name is Bill. He's right on the corner there of Brockway's driveway.
Oh, okay, I know who you mean.
Okay.
So if you're gonna get an easement, you can't just get it from Brockway.
Right.
If you're gonna go to the Mill River, you gotta get it from-
Right, well, he's drafting the letters up to see, you know, what easements, because they were up there today because they're waiting for the survey to come in anyways.
Okay.
So I just wanted you to be aware of that. When they brought up easements, that put the light bulb off, so.
Thank you. All right. Tax collector recruitment, screening committee.
Motion to approve, an application, screening committee be appointed for the tax collector position composed of Mrs. G. Louise Slish, our acting tax collector, Mr. Greg Winters, town treasurer, Mr. Paul Boudreau, our town administrator.
A motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? This is- there's a date, there's a timeframe with Louise, right?
Yeah, well, they're actually- they're prepared to meet.
Yeah, we're scheduled to meet Thursday morning to review all the applications.
It's only for, what, a three week or- when is she leaving?
October.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've got till October.
So she's with her third week of October then.
The plan would be to hire effective the 15th of September, roughly.
Or hopefully sooner, yeah.
Yeah, or sooner.
Yeah.
And it would give Louise about two weeks' time to overlap.
Training, yeah.
And bring whoever's selected up to date on procedures and-
As far as the pay compensation, we take the salary and divide it into 365 days and she gets paid by the day or how we're gonna do that?
That's separate from Louis- this is- we're talking now about-
Screening committee.
We're talking about a screening committee for the new hire, to look at the applications.
I'm sorry.
To make a recommendation to the board.
Right.
Okay. And who was it again? Louise?
I got too far ahead.
Louise, Greg, and Paul. Louise, who's doing the job and knows something about it.
Yeah.
Paul, who's be working with the tax collector, and Greg, who's also working with the tax collector.
Is the- I know you haven't met yet. Is the screening committee's goal to bring forth one, one person, one or just one?
Just one.
All right.
And we have a combination of people who live in town and people who live outside of town.
All right. I'm just thinking, should we get an independent instead of like Louise would be a prime one, Paul would sit in our favor and instead of Greg, because he's in the town hall here, would you get somebody from out in the community to also be part of that?
I don't think we need to make it all that complicated.
I'm thinking somebody like Joel LeValle or somebody like that. I don't know.
My only comment, Ed, would be, I mean, and that's- that's fine, however, if it's gonna be someone that's gonna be working the process and has a financial background themselves, not that other people don't. It just might make more sense to keep it with Greg.
That's one thing, fine, but I don't want favoritism to come into-
Oh, no, favoritism should-
And that's why we're- well, there's no favoritism. That's why we're proposing the screening committee, which is also consistent with what our HR policy says we're supposed to be doing anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And we, you know-
I think the direction that we need to give is-
And it keeps the board of selectmen at arm's length from-
The process.
From that process.
Right, but I think-
Because we have another goal or objective about bringing back to- for reconsideration, making an appointed. So we don't wanna be perceived as trying to set up someone-
You're right.
-front to-
Absolutely right.
Grease the way for them to be the appointed. So an independent little group will go and make their recommendation.
And just for the record here on this, because I hadn't thought this through, but in my discussions with Louise, she said, you know, I said, "Well, you know, maybe somebody won't run." You know, "If it is made appointment," I said, "Maybe somebody won't run." She said, "Someone will get elected." I said, "Oh, yeah. Yeah, even if somebody doesn't run, somebody will be getting, you know, rode in. So next May, we will have, no matter what happens, we will have, still have an elected tax collector."
Absolutely.
And that will be for-
One more year.
One more year, yeah, yeah. Just so we're all clear on that.
I think we should give direction to this committee that we definitely want somebody that's certified in the whole process.
We've created the criteria.
Yeah, yeah, that was in the ad. They have- it said, "Preferred candidates will be certified by the Massachusetts Tax Collectors and Accounters Association." They have, it said, preferred candidates will be certified by the Massachusetts Tax Collectors and Accounters Association.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, alternate building inspector.
I move to compete the position of assistant or alternate building inspector. And have the town administrator in coordination with the building inspector issue an announcement for the position.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
Can, I'm sorry, can you repeat it? No, I.
I was having a hard time reading my mind. I had to twist the page. Move to compete the position of the assistant building inspector. And have the town administrator in coordination with the building inspector issue an announcement for that position.
Second.
Motion been made in second. I have a comment on here. When Stanley was looking for a backup, he brought it to our attention and we appointed him. When this guy selected a backup, he asked, and now we're going to change the process here, which is okay, that's not a problem. Okay, but there's other things that come into play here that I didn't care for. I think there's a lot of personality things that came into play regarding this decision here. So I guess, you know, it's okay with me that it goes forward, but I just, I just had to say, I think it kinda stinks with what went on there, but.
Well, one, it's consistent with our HR policy that we do compete them, and two, it's a way to resolve any issues. Because they all get put on the table and can get addressed.
Agree.
Okay, I just had to have my say. Are you motion made in second? Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
It's trying for half an hour.
Okay, public safety status. What's going on with the building outback?
Not much to report, but there has been some activity. Evergreen and the, one of the subs was onsite last week. And there was some, there was some work done, some insulating work done that was done yesterday, because one of the subs showed up. So I have been in contact with Evergreen. We seem to be moving forward now ever so slowly as usual, but we're starting to make some progress. I mean, as I've said before, they legitimately, we still legitimately owe them quite a bit of money, and why they're not, you know, in a big hurry to sign off on the substantially complete form and submit a final payment request, I don't know, but I think, I'm starting to see light at the end of the tunnel, I guess.
Okay.
Heard that before.
By the way, Phil, oh, you're still here, Phil. I thought you left. Will you have somebody, one of the contractors, get up there and put the snow guard back on?
It's already done.
It's already done? Thank you very much.
Already done.
Okay, good job. All right, basement office space. What's going on with that?
Yeah, I just, I put that on there because we have talked about it in the past, but I think it's something that needs to stay on the agenda for a while, because everybody needs to put their thinking cap on. Because there was a request, you know, unofficially, to use some of that space down there.
We've had a request from the rec committee.
Yes, the rec committee.
We've had a request from the building inspector. Are there others?
The building inspector, the authority to go, if he wanted to move into that space, he could move in and then give up his other space.
Yeah.
So we haven't, we haven't closed on that at all yet.
No, we did, we.
No, we have not. No, we have not.
Look at the minutes. We, we made a motion in second to let them go ahead and do it.
No, you'll find we haven't. But, so we had two claimants.
I don't remember that, Ed, but.
Actually, I thought we had it as well. We said, but anyways, we'll verify in any case.
No, it could be, because the issue is, we told the Department of Public Safety that we are vacating those two offices. And so as a consequence, we were not required to make them ADA compliant.
Two downstairs offices. What if, what's the difference, one office or another office? Don't, Jeff, you're getting too technical. Office is an office.
In any event, the claimants so far are the, the building inspector and the.
God's sakes.
Rec committee.
I know, it's only the law, Ed. It's the building inspector and the rec committee, right? Is there anybody else?
To my knowledge, to my knowledge, that's.
Those are the only two I'm aware of.
Yeah.
And what's the rec committee looking for? Just storage?
Just storage.
Yeah, they're looking to, you know, they're next to the COA right now and just, just have a different area to do it and give that up to the COA in case they needed to store stuff, have it right there.
Because I, and I'm, I haven't been in either one of those offices in a while, so I don't know what's still in there.
I think that was, goes back to part of our original conversation about the building inspector movement, was I, I think we might have been awaiting some information as to what was still there, is it out, because they might have been looking for you at some point.
The only thing that's in the old police room is the state police radio. That was the only thing that had to be moved out of there, okay?
That's still there?
Yeah, that, Tom's, they can't move it. The state has to move it.
Oh, oh.
So it stays there.
Those deals, yeah.
And.
Must be real important.
And then the other, the other office, Bill's got, still got stuff in there. He said that he'd be cleaning that out.
I mean, because there's a different subject there. I mean, if it's for storage, it's different than office.
That's right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
That's totally different.
Totally different.
Are there any other claimants? I mean, what?
Not that I'm aware of.
Those are the only two.
Be great to have a place for records, but that's not a good place for records. It's low flooding.
Well, actually, actually, just, you know, quickly here, Louise Slisch has been working with Lydia, because there is a records room downstairs that, you know.
Are we talking about where the assessors have their records?
Yeah, next to the old fire department there. She said that, she knew there were.
That's downstairs, it's underneath the other vault.
There were a lot of records down there that didn't need to be kept, so in the past few weeks, she was down there reading through them. So as far as the town clerk's official records are, she says that we, we're, we're in pretty good shape at the moment.
Good.
So.
Okay, ambulance billing. Their motion to approve the ambulance adjustment.
Ambulance billing is a policy.
Yeah, nothing new there. We can pass right over it.
I move to approve, move to approve ambulance billing adjustment of $585.18 for the month of July 2014.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Ed, could we just, could we just finish up on the basement office space? I don't think we came over, so, I mean, we've gotta get back to people with a response. So what's, what's the next step?
We, we told everyone early on, it's just on hold, so Paul's been the repository for requests so far, two have surfaced.
Yeah.
And so, and then do we have to drill down and see that the rec committee really just wanted it for storage?
I think so, yeah.
I think we just, I mean, with some of us, I think we can keep moving forward, right? I mean.
Yeah, and Bill's gonna have to be given a deadline date to get his stuff out of there.
All right, I just didn't wanna, we, you know, leave it hanging.
I think the key thing is that, you know, the office space and storage space, two different things. I mean, if they're just looking for storage.
Which I would imagine it is. I can't imagine a rec committee's looking for office.
They're looking to store their equipment and stuff.
So, I mean, I think, I think, you know, I wouldn't recommend anybody use the old fire department as an office. And that would be.
For storage, it would be fine.
For storage, it'd be fine. I think, you know, the old police department.
Just remember, there's a lot of electronics in there, telephones in there, a lot of, a lot of equipment is in there.
Where all the infrastructure comes into the fire department.
That's right.
It still comes into this building and is fed next door?
No, all, all the telephone systems, everything.
Oh, for this building? Oh, I, oh, right. Oh, I thought you meant just the fire, right. Well, okay, so are we gonna get back to anyone with a answer?
Well, let me just throw this out, you know. We can tell, get back to people saying that, you know, well, we're, we're thinking about, you know, maybe having the recreation committee use the old fire department, and we're thinking about having the building inspector moving into the old police department.
Well, we've gotta get some clarification and things like, yeah, okay. I just don't wanna keep leaving people hanging.
Right, right.
Even if we get back to them and say it's still on hold at this point, but we've discussed it and it's, you know.
I mean, that's, that's what I think.
Why don't we give.
You know, we have, if we did that, then we'd have another vacancy.
That, that's true.
Right.
Yeah, but what's gonna happen is that room's gotta be cleaned up, at least painted or something. It's gotta be done with it.
Yeah.
Then the next one is the board of health's office go into that one, and then that one, whatever you're gonna do with that one, because they both, they had the carpets, stuff removed and.
Board of health, there's an issue there?
Yeah, the floor and stuff like that. Remember, we had to rip up all the carpets in there because of the mildew and smell in there. There was Stanley's office, the board of health's office in the hallway. So, those three. One thing at a time.
Yeah.
We should give Bill like 30 days to get his stuff out of there?
Yeah.
I don't understand the police.
State police radio?
Communication with, with the state police, whatever that is, and there, it's not a priority to move that out of there.
And to get the state to move it was, Tom's having a hard time doing that, so.
Well, they probably put in a new one for the connectivity next door.
They used that one downstairs.
They still use that? They come back?
It's tied in with the, it's tied in with the cruiser, so.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Doesn't.
Nobody's watching the ship down there, that's for sure.
Doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but.
But that's the way it's.
That's how things get broken easily when it's that kind of a setup and, you know, but, all right.
Okay, expediting permitting update.
Okay, as we talked about at the last meeting, you know, as I started digging into this, it's way more involved and complicated than I thought. And as I, so I got ahold of Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and I've been in communication with Chris Curtis and Larry Smith. Yeah, Chris shot me back an email and said, well, you know, typically, you know, communities that we're familiar with, they'd start working on all the document preparation for this, a year in advance of actually bringing it before a town meeting. So he said, it looks like Hatfield probably, he was joking, but he said, looks like Hatfield probably started at step 11. So they're gonna help us out, and the plan is that Larry, Larry's gonna start working with us this fall. And under, under their regular LTA program, which is three days of free work. And then, you know, they said, you know, we'll submit a DLT, D L T A grant application to us, and then we can finish, finish up under that. Now, the D L T A is this state grant money that.
District local technical assistance.
Yeah, money that they get from the state to provide, you know, these types of services to their member communities, so. That's where we stand. Yeah, we're gonna, we, we need some real professional assistance with this, yeah.
If, the other thing that concerned me in that note was, or maybe I was reading between the lines, that they didn't have the capacity potentially to help us. I mean, they were, only had a couple people.
Yeah, well, I.
A lot of people on vacation and stuff.
Well, a couple of staffers are out on maternity leave.
Jane, some others.
So I think that, that's why, I think he was saying, you know, that they couldn't really jump on it right now.
Okay.
But they start working on it, he just left it kinda vague, you know, in the fall sometime. So, anyway, that's where we're at with that.
Okay, town, town hall key policy. What's going on with that?
Yeah, well, a request came in for a community member to get a key, and I said, whoa. You know, we just had, you know, the, the doors were locked, and we've talked about this before, you know, town employees and chairs of the various boards and committees, I believe, you know, we, I don't know whether we voted on this or what, but the agreement was those were the only people who were getting keys. So this individual, you know, I said, oh, I'm gonna kick that upstairs, like, because I'm not saying yes or no on this. So that's my understanding. Town employees, committee chairs are the only people who get keys.
And elected officials.
And elected officials, yeah.
Every elected official gets a key.
And that person was none of those things?
That person was none of those things.
Simple as that.
Seems it.
If the, if the committee.
People, people on a one-off situation ought to be able to come and talk to you or key, I don't know how you.
Yeah.
With a particular one-time need.
Yeah.
Well, it's up to the chair to get the key to whoever's gonna run the meeting if they're not gonna be there.
Yeah.
They're gonna have a vice chair, and that's, that's the bottom line.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we just don't want all the keys being passed out around, all over town and.
No, well, my understanding is, you know, with the old keys here, half the folks in town had a key to the town hall.
Probably. Okay.
Too bad we didn't have a badge system or.
Good, I'm good.
All right. Appointment constables, we're gonna table that.
Table that.
You know what's going on with that, Brian?
I'm, I do.
All right, human resource policy. Okay.
Passed over this last.
Last time, yeah.
But, yeah, just, you know, as I said before, I'm looking to just deal with this very incrementally, you know, bit by bit, going along. There's just, I think there's three different changes. One, on the first page, it says, which is highlighted, employees are expected to provide 90 days notice of intent to retire. So that language is actually in another section of the policy, and I thought it needed to be moved here. So it, you know, it's consistent and clearer, so that's one change. And then on the next page, I'm proposing that we delete the medical exams. So I'm sure that the police have their own policy on that. I'm assuming the DPW has their own policy on that, and the fire department. But as, as far as regular employees are concerned, I don't, I see no need to have this in there. I know when I was hired, nobody told me I had to have a medical exam, so I think we just delete that section.
All right, well, let's, let's talk about that.
Yeah.
We've had some significant issues with worker comp claims, and not that. Not, not that a medical exam will always upfront be something to preclude that, but we've had exposure, and this is one way to make sure that the person we're hiring has the attributes necessary to do a particular job.
Yeah, all I'm saying.
And the other thing here is, in, in the bottom line of that same paragraph, there's an out. It says, required military exams may be waived at the discretion of the board. So if it doesn't make sense in a particular case, fine, there is a way to come forward and waive it, but as a general, I think it's a good sound medical, a good sound business practice to have in place a policy regarding medical exams.
As far as, I would go, as far as a medical exam, instead of going with a full exam, if they've got a doctor to sign off that they've just had a physical in the spring, and they got a letter stating that everything checked out, I think that would be.
That's not the kind of thing you get. All you're talking about is, are they qualified to do the job?
Right, so.
So it's not, they may have passed something else, but are they qual, are they physically qualified to do X, Y, Z? That's what the doctors, that's what the doctors are testing.
Well, when my guys go for their medical exam when they first get hired, they go by what's in that job description, as you say.
Can you lift?
Can you lift 20 pounds? Can you do this?
Can you drive?
And I think that, you know, that's where Jeff's coming from, as far as the medical exam has to correspond with what's in the job description.
Right.
Whether it be, you know, any employee, I guess.
Yeah.
Can you type? How can you type if you don't have fingers, right? You know, or, you know, or if you have arthritis bad. I mean, it's, you know, it's a good policy, and if the board has the option to waive it, waive it.
That's fine, yeah.
Just a protection, that's what it really is.
I have no strong feelings one way or another.
Okay.
So we'll keep it. It sounds like that's what we wanna do.
Motion to keep it, Jeff?
Yes.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
Are we, second?
Here for discussion?
Yeah, are we keeping that whole section and not changing any of the language? And I only ask, I'm kind of in the middle. It says, the examination shall be at the expense of the department hiring the employee by a physician appointed by the board of selection. I mean, I don't know that that's our purview to decide who, what medical, if that's, I mean, if we're gonna amend this.
How does that work with the DP? How does that work with the DPW? They probably just have their own?
Yeah, I mean, they have to go for, you know, the DOT physical, so, you know, they have their own jock to do it. But like I said, what's in the job description has to come back that he's capable to do that.
Right. Oh, no, I get that part. I'm just, I guess what I'm saying is, does Board of Selectment have the authority to pick the physician that people...
That's an excellent point. I'm not sure. I'm not sure how it works.
Why would the board wanna get in?
This board member does not.
If we had a designated one for the town employees...
Right, that's one thing, yeah, which is...
But we don't.
But we don't.
No.
I mean, who knows how will this...
Well, here's a good example.
I could tell you exactly since I wrote.
Oh, this, yeah.
How is this gonna work? I mean, the Board of Health is looking for a health agent, okay, one day a week, whatever the case may be. How does that come into play here? Okay, you know, I mean...
Is that a contract employee or...
Contract employee.
We don't, we don't do medicals on contract employees.
All right, this is just for...
These are town employees.
Town employees for, okay, not contractual. Okay.
Right. Okay, I would suggest that...
Let's go back to the drawing board and refine tune it, Paul.
This is real simple, Ed. The sentence, "The examination shall be at the expense of the department hiring the employee," period. We scratch out, "by a physician appointed by the Board of Selectment," and keep the rest of it.
Do we actually pay for people's?
Yes.
Physicals, okay.
That's standard.
That's fine. I like your recommendation, Paul.
Motion made, seconded. Correction, all right with you?
As amended.
As amended.
Yep, I'm good with them.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the last one for tonight is on the last page. Once again, this is strictly changing town administrative assistant to town administrator.
Got it.
Okay, there's a motion to accept changes on the personnel policy.
Absolutely.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Good job.
Motion carried, thank you. Okay, performance evaluation forms. Saw those in there. That's about the fiftieth one floating around here the last five years.
Well, these are, I got these from a couple of towns. These are one-pagers. These are from two different towns. I'm a firm believer of the KISS principle. Our current performance evaluation forms are four pages long. Everybody, everybody hates doing them. My suggestion is to keep them as simple as possible, so it won't be like pulling teeth every year to get them done. I'd like parts of both of these. My recommendation is that you instruct me to come up with a simplified evaluation form based somewhat on these examples.
Well, just a couple of comments. Let's remember what the purpose of the evaluation form is. It's not to fill out the evaluation form, it's to promote communication between the employee and the supervisor, shape expectations, and keep things on track. So, the form is incidental. It's a tool to use in fostering that communication. One thing on the Stockbridge one, I mean, it had too much of an administrative ring, like the neatness. So, it's like evaluating a clerk or something.
Yeah, yeah.
This other one, I think, the Marlboro, was, kinda had the better level.
Yeah, more meat to it, yeah.
But, on the other hand, the only thing down here, notes and our comments, I presume there would be an opportunity to write a paragraph or so, either the supervisor to emphasize things that couldn't be highlighted here, and the employee then would have an opportunity to comment back on it or...
Oh, absolutely. That's the way it's supposed to work.
I looked at this. To me, what makes sense to me, and Jeff just touched base a little bit on that, is expectations. What you expect the employees to do, okay? If you have a list of ten items, that these are his expectations, to maintain a current driver's license, yes, no, okay, simple forms like that with the expectations, and that's what you go by for your performance review. Did you exceed, or did you, you know, did you fulfill your agreement with the expectations? And everybody's got expectations because it's part of your job description.
Right.
Okay, so, this is basically, you know, part of it, but there's a lot of other things that aren't in here that, you know, like a driver's license, you expect them to have a driver's license, okay? Especially if the building inspector, for instance, okay, gotta have a driver's license to go down and inspect, all right? That kind of stuff.
I see that more as a prerequisite for the job, not something, a part of it.
Yeah, but how do you know if somebody lost their license during their evaluation, Phil? How do you know if somebody didn't get written up and lost their license and they're still driving a truck?
We check them early, but, you know, you're right. I mean, somebody could lose their license and keep their mouth shut and don't say anything.
Exactly, exactly. So, this way here, on your case, you get, you ask for the license and you put it in, and that's part of your review. Okay, yeah, it's certified here. I saw it, and thank you, and that's it.
Just hope he don't get bagged the next day after you said he's okay.
You know, the way to make a annual review successful is to have a mid-year review...
Absolutely.
Which is a review of the original goals and expectations that were set with the employee. I mean, that's the right way to do true evaluations.
Give him a chance to...
Well, you sit down, right, anyone who's had a supervisor before, you sit down, you say, "Here's the expectation for next year," and then halfway through, where are we in meeting those goals? And, you know, maybe the mid-year could be short and sweet like this. And then the final, I mean, I think it needs to have a little more to it, although I don't know that it needs to be four pages. That's really the way to give a successful, have a successful back and forth with the employees. I mean, I know it's a lot of work for supervisors that have their people, but it's really the right way. So, that way, someone's not hired, and then a year later, you say, "Oh, you didn't do a good job," or "We don't think you did a good job." That's not fair to them, because if somebody had said something along the way of what the issue might have been, it could have been corrected, right? So...
Yeah, yeah.
But these job descriptions, they don't mean anything, okay? They mean anything in the long run probably, but if it's based on your performance and it's based on your ability to get a raise the next year, that's meaningful.
That's meaningful, yeah.
Okay? If it's based on something meaningful, then that's easier to do, okay? Whereas, if you're not doing your job, you're not gonna get the raise next year, okay? As simple as that, all right? But you gotta have documentation to say that you're not doing your job.
Well, I think what Brian is saying is, performance evaluation is a process. It's not just a form.
Right.
And he pointed out, conversation upfront about expectations along the way as things happen, or formally at some midpoint, and then again at closure. So, you know, this, I think this Marlboro form is probably a decent, something along that line.
Something along those.
The notion of simplifying, that's, I think everybody agrees, that's great, with some opportunity to comment on there. But as Brian was suggesting, the place to talk about those expectations is the goal setting upfront in your initial discussion, and kind of the how goes it midterm.
Yeah.
And this is the report card at the end of the term.
And that goal setting really can be tied into what Ed said, which is really the job description. You know, here's the expectation, here's the job description.
Well, it's more than job description.
Well, it's more than that, but that's certainly part of it.
Part of it, yeah.
That's why you're hired, right? You're hired to do these things.
Yeah.
So, the evaluation is, are you doing, are you accomplishing these things?
And the other thing is, if you're gonna do it on a volunteer employee, forget about it, okay?
Oh, no.
Because they'll tell you to go pound sand.
We're talking staff.
No, forget about...
We're talking staff.
That's not done.
All right. Just to be clear on that.
Well, this, I haven't read the review of that HR policy for some time, but do we have sufficient guidance in there about what we expect in terms of a performance process?
I believe so, yeah, yeah.
Okay, the initial goal setting and...
Yeah, yeah, I think that's all in there, yeah, yeah.
So, how do we wanna leave this? Do we want Paul to...
Have Paul continue refining it, and I would suggest using, weighing more heavily toward the Marlboro approach, which kind of has the level.
Yeah, yeah.
The right level as opposed to...
Yeah, I didn't, I thought they both had some good aspects to them.
Agreed.
I mostly liked the fact that they were both one-page.
I'm assuming in the rating, they have one through five. But, I mean, the ones we used to do down in New York, New Jersey, they'd have the ratings one through five, and they had to add up to a certain, like thirty, they had to get thirty-two or sixty in order to maintain their position. If it's lower than that, then you have to go in and work.
I prefer a numerical evaluation, you know, for those kinds of reasons.
You can average it out, though, with the numbers.
I think you're on the right track.
All right, some of the...
Yeah, I think so, too.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Good job, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. Prospect Street Bridge.
Okay, I made a copy of the guts of the report for you. Now, if anybody's interested...
I'm booked to have the town administrators submit to the Community Preservation Committee prior to one December 2014 a request to fund repair and conversion of the Prospect Court Bridge over Mill River to a pedestrian bridge consistent with the Steel Engineering Report of 15 August 2014.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, Paul. Sounds like you wanna jump on something.
No, no, I just, you know...
The report showed the two options, the one, replacing the whole bridge and/or fixing it up, and the fixing it up was cheaper than replacing it up.
Which was a surprise to me, I have to say. But I was delighted, because I think it's a really cool old bridge, and I...
You're concerned about the peers and stuff like that, which I understand.
Well, anyways, what I gave to you is just the written part of the report. There's diagrams and a million photographs in here, if anybody's interested.
I know the bridge very well.
So, okay.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Okay.
That one December is a hard date with CPC, so...
Yeah, yeah. Well, I gave them a copy of this.
Okay.
Old business in last meetings folder. We, and at the end, Carrie Gahn had sent a letter in of resignation for a member-at-large on the Emergency Management Committee. We should make a motion to accept that.
Motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Gahn. Gahn, no, it's not. Most clarity.
Oh, Carrie Flaherty. Thank you. Thank you. From the Emergency Management...
Oh, second, yeah.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Motion carried, thank you. Now, I need another motion to appoint her to the Emergency Management Committee to represent the Board of Health.
So moved.
You beat me to it. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Okay. Okay, I just wanna touch base on this Route Five parking thing out there. It's unforeseen by the chair, and I'm gonna bring it up, because it's kind of crazy, okay? It constantly goes into emails all over the place, and everybody's got their perception of what's going on. And the bottom line is, I have commercial buildings in this town, and I've had it for thirty years. I know what the zoning bylaws are. Nobody's gonna tell me or any other business in town how many cars they're gonna have when they rent space from the individual. Simple as that. You can't control anybody on how much parking they're gonna have in there. They have to by law, by the zoning bylaws, have one space for each individual employee. That's what by law, okay? And if they have ten to twenty to thirty people, they are entitled to park in that parking lot, whether you like it or not. It's under contractual agreement with the owner of the commercial building, period. That's the bottom line. Everybody's getting all tied up with, this one's complaining about this, this one's complaining about that. This is crazy, okay?
I thought the building inspector had a very thoughtful response to all this.
Yeah, yeah.
Consistent with our regulations.
He nailed it.
If any abutter, they have thirty days from the date of his decision to appeal it to the zoning board of appeals.
It just seems like people are coming to you and to you and to me, and it's always, they can't do this and they can't do that, all right? People have to understand that you can't control what the business does. Once you have a contractual agreement with the business, it's up to them to make sure you have a parking lot.
The confusion was, some people were interpreting this as a commercial parking lot, which would have been prohibited by the zoning bylaw, but our building inspector, and I will say, I think rightly so, as you have said, this is not a commercial parking lot. By any, you know, our bylaws has not defined it, but I think by any other community's definition of a commercial parking lot, this would not pass muster.
Yeah, and I think that, hopping on what Jeff just said, Ed, I know some of the conversations I've had with various residents, I think that the information we received today from the building inspector kind of answered all the questions that I had. And the question was, you know, is it allowable or isn't it? And there's no reason by any of our bylaws that it can't be allowed. That's really the bottom line.
It's not even up to the building inspector to say that...
Well, a bylaw, right.
Okay, the bottom line is, when you have a commercial property, you're obligated to have parking and stuff like that, and the zoning bylaws specifically state that you have to have one parking space per employee. That's what it specifically states, okay? And if you got fifty employees, you have fifty spaces, okay? Simple as that.
Well, I, I mean, as long as we're talking about it, but I think the concern was, the fifty spaces being used aren't being used at that property. They're being used...
I don't know, that can be...
Oh, no.
They could be parking their vehicles overnight like the state does, okay?
Well, I guess I'm just trying to clarify, because I agree that per per employee, there's a parking space. But all those parking spaces being used are not by employees that are sitting in that building where they're parked. Those employees, I just wanna make sure that we're all saying and talking about the right thing.
A number of times, I have people in my building, they, ten cars they're parking, and they're out in the field. They go out, drive with other people, go to conferences, whatever the case may be. You got, you can't control that.
No, well, I think the bottom line that we need to try to speak to the townspeople and be clear about is, it does, whether they're parking there to be at that site or parking there to then go to a different site, doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
For the law.
Yeah.
That's, well, that's what we need to make clear. Whether we like that or we don't like that, that's the reality of the situation.
The zoning bylaws do not prohibit that.
Long as you don't start telling people about their business.
There's no other regulation that prohibits that.
No, I'm with you. I just...
When you start paying their taxes, then you can tell them what they're gonna do, and paying their bills. But other than that, you kind of mind your own business, as long as they're in compliance with the state, the regulations.
And that's the bottom line. I think all the people that I spoke to, is it in compliance with what we have on the books? That's basically the bottom line.
Okay.
And we were told by today, by the building inspector, was clarified that, yes, it is by the book, so...
I saw the, I saw the thing, okay. I just wanted to bring it up because it's going on.
Yeah, no, I think it's important to bring it up.
And...
Have the conversation.
The emails, just, I just hate to see the emails start going around, because then the open meeting laws and a whole bit, it comes into play, and I don't think we wanna get in...
Well, there was no discussion, but we needed the clarification.
Yeah, it was...
And that's happened, so I think those will stop now.
It was strictly information sharing, from what I could see.
Because it almost feels like there's a headhunt going on here.
I don't know about that, but...
Yeah, that's what it feels like. So, anyway.
Well, you know, one thing, if others have an issue with that, it'd be, as I suggested, it'd be helpful if the building inspector would clarify, these are the generally accepted components of a commercial parking lot. For evaluation criteria, does this constitute a commercial parking lot? Here are the components. If he'd outlined those, he could show this fits.
But it's not up to him to make that determination.
Well, he's a zoning enforcement officer, so in...
He's a zoning enforcement officer. He can enforce what the zoning says, just like the planning board.
And he's saying, it's not even defined.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
The planning board's... The planning board says that you have.
So he can perhaps help the planning board define it.
I mean, the, the planning board says that you have to have, for apartments, you have to have two parking spaces per apartment plus a common space for an apartment. That's what the zoning says. The planning board are making people put in three spaces for apartment, which is totally illegal. They can't do that, because that's not what the zoning bylaws state, all right? They just, they don't understand it and they're the ones that make the rules. I've been to many meetings that this has happened and I brought this to their attention. As long as there's a common area for people to park, for, for guest parking, that constitutes our bylaws. You can't make somebody do something that's not in the bylaw. So.
That's right.
They gotta, they gotta understand the bylaws before they start dictating on how they wanna do it, so that's all I have to say.
I'm, I'm making no comment about the planning board and what it does.
No, I, I made a comment, you didn't have to, cause I'm positive.
I'm just saying, I think the, the building inspector has been thoughtful in his assessment and provided good information in response to some of the questions raised.
Motion to adjourn.
There, excuse me. Before, no, there was another, another thing in this.
I tried.
From a resident on Main Street. Are we referring this complaint to anyone about noise?
Oh, noise, I, you know, Key brought that, that was, that was on the website.
Well, just communicating.
I just put it in there.
Who's?
For your information, there's nothing we can do about it.
They pay taxes, they're on the road, a truck can go through town, we, we don't, we don't have a say on what's going on here.
Well, are they talking about one particular place on Main Street? I'll bet they are.
Well, I, I, probably.
I hear trucks going by from 2 to, to 6 every morning, they go right by my house and I hear them, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, you hear them too, and you hear them too, unless you sleep in a bag, but, I mean, I hear the trucks coming through and they're, they're going up to Waitley, they're going up to one of the farmers up north, they're going, farmer here in, in the center of town.
There's, you know, there's nothing.
They pay taxes, they have a right to be there.
There's nothing the town can do unless you, you know, were able to institute a truck ban through the center of town and that, the state will never allow you to do that.
Absolutely not.
So that's the end of, end of the subject.
Well, I, I.
It gets, I have a more basic thing. When folks who are resident here send us some issue, I feel we have an obligation to answer the issue or to respond.
Okay.
It may not, well, it may well not be the answer that the individual wants to get, but they asked us the question.
Send them a, send them a letter of our discussion and let them know that, you know, nothing we're gonna do, Paul. Send them an email, just like.
Yeah.
I, I don't know who, who they're talking about, but we do have a right to farm bylaw.
Yeah.
If it's with regard to a farming, a commercial farming activity, that's, that's authorized by our bylaw.
This morning, at 4:30, a quarter of 5 this morning, I was having my coffee and I saw a truck going by. It looked like one of those chemical, the big round ones with the tanks, going right by and I know they didn't stop anywhere along here. They just kept going up north. So, you know, they got off here and they're going up to Sunnilynn or whatever, their GPS is taking them through Hatfield, that, that's what happened.
That's what happens, yeah.
And I, I agree with Jeff, I think we certainly owe people, you know, a note or something, but in, in this instance, we could even, because they talk about the sound ordinance and just say that the, you know, this, their concerns is not part of any sort of a, a sound ordinance that does or doesn't have, or the bylaw we do or don't have as far as.
We don't have anything like that.
So, just so they, just so they know that we read it and, and responded to it.
Just acknowledge, just not blow them off. That's what bothers me, we covered a couple of, from DPW today. Some of these are weeks, weeks, weeks old. It just need to be.
Should be right away, should be within, within seven days. And I thought we made that ruling that they would respond within seven days of a notice.
Just being polite, for folks and giving them an answer.
Okay, would you do that, Paul?
Yep.
Get it out this week, thank you.
Yep.